And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got it. The Secretary will take the role.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Here.
Mr. Plutoff.
Here.
Mr. Sextrow.
Here.
Mr. Burke. Ms. McDaniel.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Okay, will Sue Hare please come up now? Sue, if you'll come around over here, it's a little, I've had knee surgery and it's a little difficult for me to go down there. We have a proclamation for you tonight. You are being honored as one of the Ten Women of the Year by the Cincinnati Enquirer. And so the Village of Evendale has decided to honor you also.
Thank you.
So it says since 2020, Susan Hare has served as the Executive Director of iSpace and Evendale and Evendale Nonprofit, offering STEM education programs across the region. Susan joined iSpace in 2011 and was formerly their Director of Education. Prior to joining iSpace, Ms. Hare was employed by GE Aviation for 25 years. Ms. Hare holds a Bachelor's Degree of Mechanical Engineering from West Virginia University and a Master's Degree in Education from Mount Vernon Nazarene University. Ms. Hare was chosen by the Cincinnati Enquirer as a 2022 Woman of the Year based on her leadership in helping secure federal loans during the COVID pandemic that kept iSpace opening while facing mounting debt due to programs and camp cancellations. Ms. Hare was instrumental in bringing iSpace to Evendale, partnering with the Gorman Heritage Forum to open a shared facility on Running Road to serve over 30,000 students this year. She, her award nominator wrote, "Sue's commitment to iSpace has helped inspire so many individuals to pursue STEM activities and careers when they don't think it's possible." Ms. Hare has made Cincinnati your home for more than 35 years with her husband and best friend Ty. She has two adult children and an adorable grandson. Right?
I do. And he is adorable.
Very good, I agree. She enjoys reading, singing, travel, and volunteer work. Therefore, I proclaim for the Village Council, congratulations to Sue Hare in awarding her this citation for Woman of the Year and volunteering and for her volunteers per partner, per patrons and contributors to iSpace and for positive impact on iSpace in the Village of Evendale. I appear to effect my signature this 13th day of September 2021. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Say a few words.
Oh, I'm not much for public speaking, but I do want to thank you and just let everybody know that we are really happy to be here in Evendale. Great welcome, and it's been fabulous to work with the farm. And I know that some of you might have been driving through our parking lot and keeping tabs on things, and we appreciate that as well. We have a free family event coming up on October 15th. So if you're interested, probably children five and older would be, it's a free family STEM day. So lots of fun activities with a bunch of different exhibitors.
Good.
But, but thank you.
Very much. Congratulations. Next, we have an ordinance concerning promotions within the Evendale Police Department. It's Ordinance 22-67, and I ask permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Plutoff.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes. Ordinance 22-67, ordinance promoting Sergeant Greg Tigmeier to Lieutenant and promoting Police Officers Mark Terhar, Pete Falucci, and Tyler Trame to Sergeant on the Evendale Police Department and declaring it as an emergency. Can I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow.
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes. May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow.
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes. I now, I need a motion to adopt the ordinance, wait a minute, we did that. I now declare the ordinance adopt 22, where am I, 22-67 as an emergency. Okay, I need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Plutoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes. Too much medication.
So you're here.
Yes. Do all of these gentlemen want to come forward? Why don't you all stay down there and I'll stay up here, and we'll do the sergeants first.
Mark. Mark?
Mark Terhar. Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Mark Terhar.
I, Mark Terhar.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Ohio.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Ohio.
In all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio.
And that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinance of the Village of Evendale.
And will faithfully discharge the duty, duties of Sergeant to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge duties of Sergeant to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Very good. Officer Falucci. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Pete Falucci.
I, Pete Falucci.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Ohio.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Ohio.
And in all respects, observe the Charter and ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio.
And I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of Sergeant to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of Sergeant to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Officer Trame. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Tyler Trame.
I, Tyler Trame.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Ohio.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Ohio.
And I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio.
And that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances, ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of Sergeant to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge duties of Sergeant to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay. Officer Tigmeier. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Greg Tigmeier.
I, Greg Tigmeier.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Ohio.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Ohio.
And I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio.
And that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of Lieutenant to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of Lieutenant to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody want to say anything?
Um, it's pretty customary when a police officer or sergeant is promoted that they receive their badge after promotion and make something special in their lives to pin that badge on the little, Tigmeier, go first, you can tell us, who's going to pin it on and who's here with you?
Well, like I said, I pinned my badge on. Two of my three children here, my parents are all here, siblings and a bunch of good friends. Sure, friends.
Guess he's buying tonight?
My fiancee Haley could be pinning me. And a lot of family here tonight, and I appreciate them all being here. First time.
All right, just real briefly, thanks you guys, you did awesome in the process, and as you can see, with some recent retirements, we had a lot of promotions, and looking forward to the new leadership team here at the Evendale Police Department. We'll be all until Kickstarter except for Tyler, but Tyler's getting married Saturday, and we'll be out of town, so.
There they go.
As they always say, you're welcome to stay, but you're welcome to go.
Run, run.
Nobody's going to take us up on that, right?
Hey, Chief.
Chief.
Hello, Pamela. This morning's accident, were there any fatalities? Went on the highway? No, just four cars, just really screwed up traffic. They said somebody was rushed to the hospital and I hadn't heard anything. One person, one, there wasn't a serious incident. They played it up then on the, the news never does that.
Anything more on the GE shootings or the gunfire?
We, we think we know who it is, it's a matter, it's gonna be a matter of whether we can prove it or not, he's actually a guy that has a very, or a guy over the heights, because he's been committed, and so Sheriff's Department has some information on that.
Okay, we will now proceed with the rest of the agenda. The minutes have been, have been distributed in the previous council meetings. Are there any additions, corrections, or changes? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextrow.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
The minutes are approved. Committee reports, Finance Committee.
Mayor, tax revenues last month were low over 1.3 million, exceeding last year's figure by about $165,000. A year-to-date, 11,366, which is low over 1.5 million, greater than last year. So all positive numbers, especially this late in the year after we were.
Going, going the right way.
Uh, the, there is going to be a big expenditure, we, right now, we have revenue exceeding expenditures by about $2.3 million for the year. However, we have a big check to be written here in the next month or so, about $600,000 to complete the road project and such, so. But all other, we planned on it, we knew it was there, and all was good. The Gorman Farm, great news from the Row by Row Event, which was late last month, that they exceeded their budgeted expectation by about $16,000. So that was a huge success. Little rain earlier in the evening, but overall, it was a nice evening. The, just to remind everybody again, Sunflower Festival is October 1st and 2nd. Also, that they're going to have the following weekends, 9 to 3, Saturdays and Sundays through October, will be a Fall Farm Fun Fest. They'll have pumpkins, sunflowers, photo ops, animal docents, hayrides, and so get into the fall fever and come on down to the farm. School field trips at the farm begin, or began, I guess, today, and they'll run through mid-November, and those are pretty much sold out. So all very successful, and things are returning back to normal for them as well. The Rec Center, we have, the request for proposals regarding lifeguard wages, and this is something that we've reviewed. Our committee is in support of raising the wages for the lifeguards to remain consistent with surrounding areas. It's just very difficult to first attract and then retain lifeguards, and so where traditionally it may be a 50%, or 50 cent bump each year, we're looking at $3 increase per hour just to stay competitive and to be able to, you know, keep everybody at the pool and be able to maintain the same hours that everybody's accustomed to. End of school, the pool bash had 163 attendees, so that was positive, and that's about it for the Recs Department. Lastly, service, everybody's starting to anticipate the falling leaves. Leaf bag pickup will be, will be beginning September 24th, Saturday. Those hours are 9 to 1. They'll run through the next six weeks, and then Wednesdays, 1 to 7, be able to pick up leaf bags during that period. The, for those who have, me being one of them, a lot of limbs in the front yard expecting to be picked up, the chipper, just so everybody knows, the chipper is out of service right now. So be patient, they're doing what they can to get the limbs picked up and such, but right now, everything's running, they're trying to pick them up individually and try to address it, so just be patient, they'll get to them sooner or later, but the chipper's out for a while. The Service Department Storage Building, they have a, they've engaged MSP architects, and we're looking at proposals to put a new storage building since we took down the Aberdeen property, new storage building up behind the current storage building and expanding on that a little bit. The, speaking of Aberdeen, the buildings have been removed, and the contractor's currently removing the concrete, and it should just about hopefully be done very shortly where all the grading work is complete. And that's about it, Mayor.
Okay, any questions, comments to the Finance Committee? Okay, Fire and Police?
Okay, I'm going to start with Fire. We've had another resignation in the Fire Department. That makes three in recent months. We had a little, a limited discussion, and we'll need to have a discussion at large with Council as to reasons why we are experiencing resignations. Okay. Um, we're, we're, the advertisements are already out for hiring new people as replacements, so we'll have that process and have hiring meet prior to the end of this year. Also, you'll know that we have a hiring ordinance for the Administrative Assistant to the Fire Department, that's on our agenda later. And Chief is proposing that we hire a full-time fire inspector that works 40 hours. We've just not been able to address inspections in a manner that we wish to, so that's a recommendation on the table. I'm not sure, I don't think we discussed how we actualize that. That's a recommendation that the committee agreed to, and is bringing to Council as.
We'll, we'll have to discuss that in the pre-council meeting next month.
Okay, so.
We, we haven't decided exactly how it'd go either.
How, exactly how we're going to do it, just that the need is there. Also, on September 28th, the ladder truck will go to Summit Park for a Welcome Home Event for Vietnam veterans. As a reminder, October 2nd through 9th is Light Tonight Red, you'll see the campus lit in red. And the Safety Task Force recommended that we do some additional hardening of facilities around campus that were presented to us as recommendations that can be done in more than one year. I unfortunately misplaced my sheet, or I would have brought a copy for everyone to have. Once I find it, I will send it and scan it, or ask somebody to get us, somebody being the chief, to give me another copy to distribute, everybody should have a copy of it, okay? What we agreed to recommend is Option A, when you see the sheet, it'll have Option A and Option B, and Option A has to deal mostly with sidewalks and, I'm losing it in my notes. But anyway, it's on Option A, do you want to speak to it? That would, that would be better. So in other words, we, we did ask the Safety Committee that, to confirm what, how we saw it in the committee as the way to approach the projects on the multi-year basis, on a two-year basis. Go ahead.
So the proposal basically has 800 feet of bollards, several hundred feet of wood barriers for the CAC, as well as cable guard along Glendale-Milford Road, and vehicle stopping barriers that are portable, that can be moved throughout the campus. That's Option A. Option B is the water-filled, they're a little less expensive, but then we have a huge storage issue.
So Option A, they're all going to be permanently placed?
Permanently placed, except for the vehicle barriers there. Won't take up as much room as, I believe we figured we needed about 400 water barriers, and just so limited on space, we wouldn't have a place to put them, but the vehicle barriers, I think we're looking at 10 to 12, maybe 15. So, and if we can find room for those.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to the Police Department, um, just wanted to note, um, congratulations again to all those who have been promoted. Um, it does create a vacancy at Detective, and Anthony Smith is going to move into that position in the Police Department. Also, if you've been driving on Cooper, as I do every day, there are some flags installed at, at the corner of Old Otterbine and Cooper to provide more visibility to pedestrians sidewalks. It's also being looked at to be placed at Winnebago and Cooper as well, to give more visibility to pedestrians who may be trying to cross, cross the street there.
Have we ever considered the flashing light?
We had, I'm gonna let the Chief speak to that.
Yeah, I had some discussion with, uh, with Brandon about that. And, uh, we're, we're gonna look at some options for those flashing ones, whether they're the constantly flashing that just remind people that's there, or the button actuated ones for when someone goes across. So we'll look at some options, and that probably won't happen this year, but maybe look at it for, uh, for next year after Brandon and I get together and see what is gonna work best. And we'll get some numbers on that.
You might remember, there was a little girl struck down by, uh, Winnebago. And, uh, then we began looking for ways to slow traffic down on Winnebago, on, uh, Cooper. Couldn't find anything until all of a sudden, uh, one day I was driving through Glendale, and I saw where they had a bunch of these flags up on their, uh, poles. Well, that's worth a try. So that's what we're doing, uh, trying to see what, uh, see what effect it has, see whether people think it's really working. But there's other options, we'll see too.
Yeah, we did, like the Chief said, we did also talk about, uh, the concept of having a light flashing.
The one on Plainfield is used all the time.
Yeah.
Right, and, and that's one of the button, that button actuated ones, yeah.
And people, you know, they go out that way all the time, and, and people respect it. And they're going 35 miles an hour there, they're only supposed to be 125 on Cooper.
25 on clear.
Right, only supposed to be, I said.
The main concern, um, Plainfield is flat, whereas Cooper is downhill. That's the difference.
Right. Um, some other things that are occurring in the Police Department is, the department is gonna, uh, partner with the Domestic Violence Enhanced Response Team, otherwise known as DVERT. That will involve some changes to our policy, but other agencies have been using it, and no costs associated with doing that. But domestic violence calls are challenging to handle, and this is a, another resource that the department can use to be able to handle those particular calls. Um, likewise, we've had some discussions, I know in Hiring Committee, I believe, and Council, about the increase in runs that involve mental health issues. Um, so there's a real need to have mental health and addiction, um, help providers for that. So our goal is to see if we can get an on-call mental health specialist. This is one of the things that the Chief is looking into for us, and we discussed at length, and.
Yeah, there, uh, there was a recent announcement out of Columbus, uh, about the governor has some kind of a committee going together, and, uh, we might see a little bit what they're gonna do.
Okay. Great. I can move on then to building, planning, and zoning. We have additional readings on the zoning amendment change. Um, there's nothing pending in the Board of Zoning Appeals. And we had, we should all have this report, but there were like 20 building permission, try that again, building permits issued last month, one of which was residential. Uh, brought in 17,000 and, and permit applications. Um, as far as code enforcement, a couple of things that are being looked at are, there are some properties, couple on Reading Roads, the old Homer's property is an example of where there's still asphalt there, and there's really no provision for having a parking lot without a business. So we're trying to get that addressed and that asphalt removed. And then, as far as outstanding cases, seven were closed last month, and there are five still active, that was as of last week. Where we stand. Cultural arts is booming, what can we say? There were 20 classes started on the 6th of September. Bourbon tasting is on the 30th of September. The 7:00 to 8:00 PM session is already sold out. There's still availability in the 5:30 session as we speak, okay? The photo exhibit is coming on October 2nd, and we had over 300 submissions for that. 318 submissions for, um, we've been able to accommodate, at this point, 111 were jury, came out of the jury for that. Tri-County Players is opening their production on September 30th. Black Coffee and Agatha Christie Mystery. It'll be a Friday, Saturday, Sunday event for that weekend and the following weekends of what. And, um, I think that's the major, and then there's Art Venture on the 23rd. I'm gonna refer you to either the newsletter or the website for what the Art Venture is. That, it's, okay, it's waiting list only, so. That's what happens in a week, gotta be quick, gotta be quick here. Um, and I think that concludes the report.
Any questions, comments? That'll constitute the, uh, Fire and Police Report. I have a couple of things on my thought list. Chief, have, I heard the fourth COVID shot is now available. Have we talked about doing that at the Rec Center again? Having something there available for, for people?
So I talked with the, uh, County Health, Public Health Department. They are no longer doing their mobile clinics, which would be here and there. They have it set up at the Board of Elections, and then three other sites on their website. It's readily available at all of Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, your doctor's offices, and so forth. Uh, it does cover all of the known variants right now, along with the original strain.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a rather potent shot.
Good. Just wondering. We're working on the, uh, pickleball courts for October meeting. Uh, they're, uh, trying to get bids now, uh, for, uh, the courts. And, uh, by October, I hope we can have those on the agenda to start working on those. They would be located right next to the tennis courts, uh, on the campus. Uh, town meeting. I am looking at the, uh, Sunday, uh, just before Election Day. How does that hit everybody? Or how does that work for the, I have not, not bounced this off of, off of Kim.
Election Day is the 8th.
Please.
Election Day is November 8th.
Yeah, the election's November the 8th, so it'd be.
6th.
November 6th. How does that look on your?
The day before.
How does that look?
30th?
Please.
Were we saying October 30th?
Uh, November 6th.
November 6th.
How's that look on your calendar, Clint Kim? Good? Okay, good.
It's a 1 o'clock Bengals game, just letting you know. Home against the Carolina Panthers.
Yep.
They oughta be done by the time we're.
They should, I notice. That's a.
I know. The sacrifices one makes to be a public.
5 o'clock?
5 o'clock. Okay.
Did we decide, did you decide about, is it gonna be just a meeting, or are you still thinking about that?
Still debating that, still debating that. The, uh, next March of 2023, if it's agreeable to Council, I'd like to mark that for a week later again of conflicts with the mayor. I'd like to be in Florida. If that's agreeable.
No problem.
Okay. All right. Um, and, um, next day, next, um, oh, the, uh, as you know, our Recreation Director is retiring. And, uh, so we will, uh, put out, um, requests for different people to, uh, apply for that. My question is, do you want it to go to statewide or something like that? Or do you want it to be limited to internal candidates? My thought is, we have a couple of pretty good internal candidates at this time. And, uh, I would favor internal only, but, uh, what do you think?
I favor internal as long as there's not a requirement that we go.
Well, there is a requirement that we advertise it within the department then, as I understand it. Isn't that correct, Kathy? We have to advertise it within the department. So anybody in the department can apply. Is that okay?
My opinion was that we, we should go outside, but, uh, I mean, you could, you know, you could go either way.
Now, I think we have several qualified candidates.
You know, don't know, you know, we're sawing ourselves short by not at least looking. We still might end up hiring somebody inside.
That's right, well, not if we don't advertise it, advertise it outside. My thought is.
Well, I think, go ahead.
I, I prefer looking outside as well. I mean, I, I think there's very strong candidates, but, um, you just never know. And I think it's healthy just to, to see, even, even if we're just getting ideas from what other people may do with the department, it's as healthy and as strong as the department is. I like the idea of opening it up, uh, for other candidates. Likely, you know, perhaps that, you know, there, there certainly the people who are already here would have an inside track, but, um, you just never know how strong a candidate could be. And, um, and I think it's just healthy for the department to open it up, um, to outside candidates as well.
Last time we did not open it to outside candidates. We stuck, struck strictly to internal candidates. But we'll do whatever you think. What your druthers are.
Well, I think my druthers are, we've done both, gone out, you know, outside and inside. And even though we have strong candidates, I think, um, we had a larger, why should I say that? Um, I think this, the, I think at this point in where we are with the Rec, that I would prefer to see us open it up broadly and, and request our internal candidates to apply, you know, as well, so that we can have some view of the strength of our, of our department.
Okay.
I agree, I think you do learn from outside.
Okay.
I mean, it's not a, I don't think it's a dig on the ones that we have. I think it's more seeing and understanding what's on the outside. You may find that we're just so far above everything else out there.
Okay. All right, we'll, uh, David Elmer will put together a, uh, resume approach and, uh, we'll go to, I think statewide. I don't wanna go national on the thing. I think the statewide is a better approach to it than, uh, we'd get somebody from Colorado and gotta pay moving expenses.
Do you do state or within a certain region? Cause you look at people right across, tri-state even, cause you have a lot of strong people across the river, um, and such. I don't know what publications you would necessarily advertise in, but within a couple hundred mile radius, I think you could probably get quite a few strong candidates. I agree with you, I don't think we wanna be trying to attract somebody from Colorado or Alaska. You know, any states where they're moving everybody, their family, too far.
Okay.
But I don't think we should be naive about the fact, if you advertise somewhere that's intended to hit this base, we may still get some people from other, other states.
Okay, get with Kim, get with you, and try to develop what the job requires. And I don't have anything else. Okay, let's proceed to the agenda then. Uh, the next ordinance is 22 dash 60, and I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Your paper is on your mic. Everybody's looking around like, where's that coming from?
Ordinance 22 dash 60, ordinance amending the official zoning map of the Village of Evendale by rezoning parcels 611 dash 0040 dash 0079 from IF dash 1, Industrial Flex dash 1, to PUD dash ID, Innovation District PUD, and rezoning parcels 61 dash 0040 dash 0004 and 61, 6 dash 0040 dash 0002 and 611 dash 0040 dash 0049 and part of parcels 611 dash 0040 dash 001 and 614 dash 0040 003 from PF Public Facilities to PUD ID, Innovation District PUD, and we, and zoning parcel 61 dash 0040 dash 0065, PUD dash ID, Innovation District PUD. May I have a motion to suspend the second, um, suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
Before we proceed, Mayor, Kathy, are we okay with, there are a lot of OOs and numbers and all that, and a few of them were mixed up a little bit. I just wanna make sure we're okay proceeding.
I think we are, we'll, we'll get it right. So I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading, or the third reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 22 dash 60 adopted. Next is ordinance 22 dash 64, and I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the payment of amounts due upon certain contracts requiring certification of the availability of funds and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Uh, it's in the read-in emergency section.
Please.
Read-in emergency section.
Not on there. Okay, adopt the ordinance as an emergency. Okay.
So what should be?
Motion to agree to the emergency measure.
Emergency section?
So moved.
Mr. Sextro? Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 22 dash 64 adopted as an emergency. Back page. Ordinance 22 dash 65, and I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
An ordinance approving a transfer from the Contingency Fund to the Pool Department and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency. Motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency, or adopt the ordinance...
Agree to the emergency. I, excuse me, I, when I printed some of these things off for the mayor, I forgot to add a line, so that's why he's, it's confusing to him. It's not his fault, it's my fault. Okay.
So, the motion is to adopt the emergency clause?
Yes, yes.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 22-65 adopted as an emergency.
A motion to adopt the...
And we need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 22-65 adopted as an emergency. Ordinance 22-66, I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
An ordinance approving an additional appropriation in the general revenue, in the general fund for the capital budget, and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Now, may I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
A motion to agree to the emergency clause.
We have to vote on it?
We just did that.
You already did that.
On the 22-60.
A motion to agree to the...
Now, I need a motion to agree to the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 22-66 adopted as an emergency. Ordinance 22-68, and I...
We have to adopt.
We have to adopt it.
We have to do the motion to adopt. Yeah, a motion to adopt the ordinance.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Good, Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 22-66 adopted as an emergency. Next, we'll have ordinance 22-68, and I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire Kara Brown as the permanent part-time administrative assistant for the fire department, and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Now, I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
I now declare, I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 22-68 adopted as an emergency. Any other business to come for us this evening? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.